Thank you all. Apologies, I've got apologies from councillor Thompson in Wetherall. I've been advised from Actland and Butcher to move Andrew and seconded Theresa. Thank you very much. All in favour, please say aye. Against, carried, thank you. Confirmation of agenda, I haven't got any modifications, anyone any changes? Just confirm that. Declaration of interest, I note that I have a 0.03% interest in the registered dogs and I will be standing on that. I have a 0.4% interest in legal licensing, we'll stand back from that for Theresa to chair that matter. I'm not quite sure what the difference is, but apparently there might be one. Minutes, the biodiversity fund subcommittee, moved Andrew, seconded, Gentee. Any comments before you?
There's just plenty of applications coming in. The last round was better than the previous round, so the message seems to be getting out there. We've got a few more from applications from Strath Torry, but I'm sure you'll be working on that, Madam Chair.
They just do it without having to require council funding?
And there is a new round out now, so for you, members of the public who have got a project that they consider as protecting a piece of biodiversity in the public interest.
I'm sure Graham is listening to you and making sure it goes out in FYI and other news blogs that the city has.
It's 30th of September, I'm advised by my colleague is the cut-off date for that, so.
Very good.
Good amount.
Thank you. We've got to move a second, are there any questions or discussion? All in favour, please say aye. Against, carried, thank you.
And on the next one?
No, it's not that one. I've got the animals I can do at 0.03%, I think. Annual report on Department of Internal Affairs Animal Control, thank you Roz and Kevin. Do you like to make any comments about your report? Welcome.
Thank you. This is the annual report for the Department of Internal Affairs Animal Control. Just a couple of comments, we've got a constant increase of dogs, we're now up to 16,500. When I started working with Animal Control in 2005, we were on 13,500.
That was the number registered?
Yes, nine dogs. The pound facility is working really well, we've had no germs, we've had no parvovirus and the dogs seem to be pretty happy in the new establishment. The relationship with DRD is working really well, we've got a really good understanding of how we operate with each other, it's taken a wee while to find some areas out. And since they started working with us in December 2011, they've adopted 177 dogs. That saved 177 dogs.
Great. Thank you. Any questions? I've just got a question, it came up from Dornoch in recently. The dog exercise areas, how do we choose those sites? And if there is demand for any more, what do people do?
Historically, they were reserve areas, or areas that the council had. So it was really to look at where they could be put throughout the city, so they're strategically placed, what was it? Saks, yeah.
Paid 5.5.
Right. Yeah, so we do surveys from time to time with the people using the exercise areas to see if they can be enhanced in any way, or in comments about whether there needs to be more in other areas, but.
Wouldn't that be a slightly counterproductive question, only asking those that are using the ones that are there?
Well, no, because there's some travel distances to go to certain areas, and whether they like the particular part, because each, I don't know if you've been around them all, but they're quite distinctive in their own right, ranging just from a radio box at Kew, Elwood Fodden Corner, to much more sort of hilly area up in White Harry, and then you've got your Forest Park, which is different again. So they're all quite unique and have been a success. In fact, other councils have come to us to move just recently about setting up one, just one, and looking at how we've gone about it and what we've done with it.
Thank you. Question from councillor Collins.
In your budgets, Kevin, I remember what they are, remind me, but it seems two or three years ago, there was a lot of publicity about littering, about dangerous dogs, and obviously about relicensing, and it seemed to me to have fallen away a bit, and the promotion of that. And as a result, I think dog littering, it seems to be on the increase around some areas in town. And we're reading some, almost weekly, not fortunately so much for the need, but some horrific, horrific injuries to people, children, grown-ups, adults, et cetera, of dangerous dogs. And I wonder what your thoughts on bringing back the promotion of those incidences anyway, of littering, on a leash, a group of scubas, I'd seem to be picking up a lot around my area, and it's on the move, it's a decision.
As Roz has said, the increase in number of dogs and certainly compounded fowl, the more dogs you have, the more they seem to be doing it. It's difficult for us, we have to actually be there to see it, that's one thing about catching the corporates that aren't cleaning up. Really, a lot of it comes down to it's peer pressure, when people that are good dog owners that pick up afterwards and others don't. It's really an annoying education.
The budget was also pulled back for advertising. We did have a mouthful used for asking people not to pick up their poo, walk their dogs on the leash, keep them under control, and we've had to pull it back to the day-to-day business as such, to enable us to still get the message about registering the dog and not walking on a sports field.
But it also implies that if there are more dogs, there may be new owners of dogs, there's a bit of slack.
My understanding is, and we've just had a briefing on the residents' opinion survey, that the satisfaction or lack has actually gone down, is that how that went all went up? Was it that it's gone up, it was one of those questions that was, could be read both ways? That incidents?
Satisfaction's gone up.
Satisfaction has gone up, that's what I.
So the incidents have gone down?
Yeah, that's what I had understood, to be fair, thank you, yes. So despite your suggestion that it had increased the satisfaction of residents according to the poll?
Well, I need to take so much stock from residents' opinion surveys, they are not the people for opinion, like I am, and others around are telling me that it's not bad for residents.
And it may be an area-by-area issue?
Yes, so as we move into the next budget, there will be an area with our advertising budget that we work with Graham's team to look at, is it a focus that needs to be increased focus?
Or enforcement? Or re-enforcement, have you got an issue?
Sorry, through the chair, we've also been introducing self-filling poo bag holders, and that's been taken up quite nicely by a lot of dog owners in the more frequent dog walking areas, not just the dog parks. So you take your own bread bags and stuff them in there, and the dog owners reuse them. And the senior animal patrol officer's designed the holders themselves, and this is working well, yeah.
The dangerous dogs is another issue that is causing injuries to people around the country.
Yes.
John?
Yeah, it's a good news in this report, and I think, you know, given there has been quite a dramatic increase in the number of dogs, the decrease in the amount of dogs, which I think is quite significant, and the other one, infringement notice, the day well down as well, so I think, I mean, dogs have always caused problems, so generally speaking, I think it's a very good report. I'm going to move that being received, Madam Chair.
Thank you, seconded, thank you councillor Thompson.
Yeah, I'd just like to say how much I appreciate the dog exercise areas. I don't have a dog, but we have, my stepson has friends that do have dogs, and we go up to White Harry, and the kids just run around and go wild, and they get used to being with dogs that aren't on leashes, and how to manage, you know, the company of dogs, and the amount of interaction between people when we go up there to play is amazing, the sense of community. So I reckon it's a really, really good initiative, and the more spaces like that we have, the better. They're fantastic.
Okay. Any other questions or speak to the promotion?
Well, I'd just like to reiterate, Speaker of the Council, I think that this is a really positive report, and I think staff have obviously done a lot of work in the last year and should be acknowledged. I do wonder whether, there is a possibility that, I would be curious about whether or not the same number of cats are neutered as dogs, and I do think that there is a dialogue we had probably at the national level about whether or not it's a sensible thing for the country, for us to require other pets other than dogs to have the same level of care and attention, I suppose, and focus on them as we do with dogs, because obviously the results that we're getting with registered dogs in areas like being able to assist with neutering and that sort of thing are over and above that, that we can have, that over and above any kind of oversight that we can have of pets that aren't registered. So I appreciate that that's probably not something that we can, necessarily influence around this table.
Got goldfish in budgets that are kept in cages perhaps aren't the ones that you were referring to, you're talking about roaming ones.
That's right.
Ferrets and rats maybe. Thank you. I'm going to put the motion, all in favour, please say aye. Against, carried, and I'll hand it over to Theresa.
Okay, I will move, okay, the next item is the annual report on alcohol, and the Kevins, the two Kevins. Would you like to talk to your report?
Not really, it's a report on the previous 12 months up to the June, it's sort of been a bit overtaken with the introduction of the sales supply of alcohol there and preparing for that. You'll see that the workload's increased quite considerably, not sure how the new act is going to impact on that workload at this point. I'd imagine some will drop off, but there'll be others that carry on.
Right, and has any committee members got any questions? And I'll ask one, because it says in the conclusion that one of the issues is the supply of alcohol to minors, and I presume that that is actually not at bars, but, you know, at bottle stores and supermarkets, and the Dunedin Alcohol Partnership Group brought this up. So what sort of proactive things can we do educationally to try and discourage people from, you know, giving out their supply of alcohol to minors?
Most of the supply to minors is happening in the home.
Exactly.
Parents giving alcohol for their children to take away, or they're just taking it away anyway, or older citizens. We're not really sure what we can do about that, because it is happening in the private setting. With new sales supply of alcohol, though, there may be provision there, because even parents have got to, if they do wish to supply, they've got to do it responsibly. So giving a child a bottle of vodka to take away for the evening isn't responsible, so there may be some comeback, but until that's tested in court, we don't know how that will go.
And having some control over your storage at home as well. Okay, so this, councillor McTavish?
The only question that I have, Kevin, is whether the public might be in a position to, or when we might be in a position to go to the public with a draft local alcohol policy, would you comment?
I'm hoping to have a draft ready for PNE in November.
Right.
I've just had talk with the university about that, and I'll put in quite a weight of submission.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I just support the work that you're doing with the alcohol partnership, the education work is really quite critical to changing behaviour in the city.
We've got a new project, we're looking at getting into the schools.
Yes.
The international research keeps telling us that awareness packages in school don't tend to be sustainable, but that we, locally, we don't feel that's a reason not to try it. We think that if we can get a package going and make it business as usual in the schools, with time, it will flush out those that weren't part of it, and, as I say, become business as usual in the schools to encourage responsible attitude. So we're looking at a unit standard at the moment that has an alcohol component, we've been given permission to change that around to get the message across that we want, and that will hopefully be able to be credited to the CEA, so maybe attractive to schools actually introduce it.
Yeah, well, I'm happy to move the report, we've got a seconded. Okay, councillor McTavish, there's no other comments, and I'll move it. All those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
Against, and that's passed.
Speed limit's final amendment, seven, Ron, or no, Diane, going. Ron is an apology, he's unwell. Hello. Do you want to speak to the reporter over here?
Yes, Ron has asked, I think, like, three key points, I suppose there's four, because Ron is sick, I'm standing in for him. Now, the key points that he has asked me to put forward in the report is that firstly...
Can you pull that towards you, but it's rather, yeah, same better, okay.
Firstly, that this review will be, that's proposed here, amendment seven, is the last that will focus on individual roads and streets. Essentially, it's a cleaner of roads that warrant change based on the criteria given in the report. Secondly, future reviews will be largely area-based, again, as we signaled in this report, in earlier reports. Thirdly, as a heads-up, we're currently investigating schools in Dunedin to see which, if any, would warrant a 40 km an hour variable speed limit. And if we find any that do, we would like to include those ones in the statement of proposal for amendment seven.
Thank you. So the recommendation would be, would need to change in order to incorporate that matter about the schools?
Yes, now, I did ask Ron, you know, in terms of process, on this sickbed, this, and I guess I asked this of the committee as well, this, from what I understand, Ron has made two recommendations in this report, and the question is, can we add another recommendation to allow us to include any schools that may warrant quite strict criteria for variable 40 k speed limits?
Certainly, as Chair of the Transportation Strategy, we had a couple, I think, of submissions from schools, or at least one, relating to this issue, or that touches in part on their issues. And I think it would be certainly consistent flowing through from the hearings, that that were the case and that opportunity. What timeframes are you looking for to do that work with the schools?
We are, we are working on that now. Now, I've had to pick this up quite short notice.
Appreciate that.
But it's something that I think we are looking at completing within the next month. I'll try and chase through my bits of paper. Look, I'd have to ask Ron for confirmation of timeframe, but he thinks that we can do it as part of the current review in terms of the overall timeframe.
Councillor President?
I just remember the comment of recommendation two, which surely captured that issue, the prospect of schools, I think that's a bit wrong. I think it's a pretty sort of catch-all recommendation.
No, but this is to be incorporated in more of the statement of proposal rather than the long-term plan. So I think it goes under one rather than two.
I've got some words.
Thank you, councillor McTavish.
I think it would be a one, like, one A, one B, as councillor has just suggested, one B being that the Chair of PNE be delegated authority to amend the statement of proposal to also include schools, if any, found to warrant consideration of a 40 kph speed limit at the conclusion of the current review.
I'm happy for that, or for it to be this Chief Executive or a number of people, I'm happy whichever way that is.
That's good, I'll see you.
You were saying that, and so you're doing number two as well? Are you moving number two as well?
Oh, you can have the whole lot.
Thank you. I thought when you came to the table, Diane, you said four matters, but I think you only spoke to three, or did I get that wrong?
Oh, sorry, sorry, what I was meaning for the, so I presented the three key points that Ron wished me to put across, I guess the other one was basically that I was standing in for Ron.
Yeah, that was very important.
I must be a little bit flippant there, sorry.
Yeah, sorry. I think we understand the importance of that, it's been seconded by councillor President. Theresa?
Yeah, I just had a question. When I've sat on speed limit bylaw reviews previously, there was one, and it was in School Road, which doesn't have a school incidentally.
Yes.
And the police fought it forward, because they were concerned about the speed people who were travelling on there, but the process of consultation needed to be redone, and I'm just wondering what ever happened to that one, because it continues to be missed off the list. So has it, has it been, will it never be done now, or will it be done later?
I'm happy to answer that, since I chaired this, I chaired that meeting with Neil and yourself, and it was decided at that stage not to incorporate it, that it would be incorporated through a city-wide, sorry, an area-wide review. We've done the area-wide review on the nature, as you're aware, and this came up at the Chair's briefing the other day.
Done in the Moskowitz.
And there hasn't been a review of the Moskowitz-Tari area, albeit there are some in the Moskowitz-Tari area here, but these are seen as recreational amendments relating principally to parks, and I think the Friendship Road, Friendsville roads is again more for the recreational reasons that we're considering it in this case.
It's okay, so it will come up in the area.
And by the area by area review, is what you revised before.
Okay, so that's just noting, so I just feel like it's going to get lost.
Councillor President?
Can I speak to the proposed amendment?
It's not an amendment, it's a motion, because it isn't an amendment, as far as I understand, it's absolutely fine.
It's an amended motion. I'm a wee bit concerned about the process for the amended motion. If Ron had been here and was able to answer questions directly, even then, it would have been, I think, a little bit on the hoof. As I understand it, we are essentially giving Ron the ability to make decisions on our behalf regarding any schools that he thinks that there is an issue with, given that in the past, we had actually taken a fairly keen interest in where speed limit changes happened, and we as a committee have decided those things. I don't think that it's appropriate now, you know, especially with Ron not being here, to basically advocate that decision-making over to a staff member. I'm quite happy with the existing recommendations as they are, I recognise that there may be an issue with schools, and that can easily be picked up by recommendation number two, but for us to basically allow any school 40 km variable speed limit, whatever a variable speed limit means, to not be able to understand exactly what that entails, to not know what schools are involved, to me, that is something that I'm just not quite comfortable with. So would much prefer the original recommendations if I had the opportunity to vote on it.
Would you like to ask, matter be laid off the table until the council meeting on the 23rd, hoping that Ron could attend?
That would be great, especially if we could get him in for upfront about which, which schools, what's meant by 40 variable.
Diane would like to answer that.
Okay, I just want to give a bit more explanation to the request to include, or to go through this process. We do quite a bit of work for schools, and we already have a road safety school toolbox, which includes parking, it includes safe crossings, like deer crossings and so forth. Following on from the process Kate was talking about, we have, and there's a whole lot of timing things that have happened, the New Zealand Transport Agency also has some very clear guidelines on variable 40 k speed limits around schools. Now, where we're at, this, we've been asked to open up the investigation work that we do with schools to see what we need, maybe, maybe a bit from, excuse me, a variable 40 k speed limit. Now, from what I understand of the process, from here on, we would continue to prepare a statement of proposal, and so, you're more familiar with the council processes than I am, could we not, could one possibility be, we continue with the investigation, then as the statement of proposal, we may identify some, and then you would also have a further opportunity when discussing that statement of proposal, to take, you know, to review the list as it were.
My understanding of the background of this is that there is a timeframe issue, they're trying to facilitate this, or add value to the expense of doing the administration of the change in the bylaw anyway. And this issue came up relatively late in the statement, they did some work on the statement of proposal, and then this request for schools came in later, but the admin that goes with doing the statement of proposal in the hearings and everything else, it seems the quickest, the most efficient way is to see if we can get some more work to add on to it, and make the most of the downtime of it, not from a council. So the whole thing could be delayed equally, but, yeah, the criteria that we know suggested, and I'm not quite sure that I've ever been at a council table where we've said we won't participate in the consultation on the speed limit changes, so I'm not quite so certain that there's an issue, but, Mia.
Well, I was just going to suggest if I note that the first part of the resolution is to be reported back to PNE, so is there not an option to also report back the second part, or, given that this is a Part A item, change the second part to a recommendation to council, and the next council review?
Yeah, I think there may be some sense in doing that with a council.
And then it can be done with some alacrity.
Yeah, and then ask Ron to attend, I mean, make a certainty, yeah. As the mover and seconded, happy with that?
I'm quite comfortable, I was on the, under the impression that we were going to be seeing the statement of proposal at PNE before it went out for consultation anyway, and that would be a perfect opportunity to discuss any schools, well, schools if any, that were identified as part of this staff review that's underway, so I had no concerns removing it on that basis, but if other members do have concerns, then by all means, let's delay that conversation until council.
It may be the councils earlier, that's the point. Maybe the councils earlier, that's the point. If there's a time issue, it could go to one of the two remaining council meetings, just two, and not wait till the next PNE.
I think a critical thing from my perspective as mover is that if we're not going to be doing another speed review for some time, that there is a mechanism for schools that are identified through this current review as being areas of concern to get considered sooner rather than later. So I would hate for, and I'm sure the schools involved would hate to miss this current opportunity, you know, and have to wait another year or two years, or whatever it is, until the next review came up. So I think whatever facilitates that outcome, Madam Chair.
So you're happy to report it back to council or the next planning environment committee? Or, or, sorry, did I put the most, council or the next appropriate standing committee, maybe a better way of wording that, in one A? Okay, that is amendment, you're happy with that?
Yeah, I mean, I was quite happy with just one or two. I went along with councillor McTavish's resolution for Point of Clarity July, but I think one or two would allow schools to be involved to the degree that they wish to anyway, so, yeah, I'm quite happy with it.
I think B is required, but that's, if you're happy to add that in. So councillor Brown said?
No, the mayor gathered the points that I was going to have. Do you think we see what's proposed?
Just, she's just changed that, so it's been up there for a while, except for that PNE's changed.
For me to be comfortable with that second addition, I would want to know exactly what a 40 k variable speed limit is, whether the police are interested in enforcing it, how it is going to be signposted.
Sorry, I think that probably changes to...
Sorry, I think that probably changes to, that the statement of proposal to include schools, it doesn't require my sign-off now because it's going to be going to the council. So I think my name, whoever's the chair of P and E should be the next council. So.
But the fact that it's going to be made to include schools.
Yeah. So, and that goes in there. Two, B, two, yeah. In which case it comes back anyway. What generally happens with these is the speed limit proposals goes to the hearing. And so there's a hearing process for that. Diane has in the past presented one way of how it would be implemented as part of the statement of proposal, that's how it works, Diane. We've got it, the system's much better in place. So all of that is at the front end of the statement of proposal, how it's going to be implemented.
But we're being asked here to vote for something, a forty-k PA variable speed limit, which I haven't heard of before. And we don't know anything about it, we don't know how it works, we don't know what it is.
We're not being asked to, okay, here, we're being asked that it can be included in the next review, which will come back to either council or a standing committee.
We're asking to, we're being asked to include something which we don't know what it is.
Well, I'm aware what a forty-k variable speed is, we've got them at Wacarrie already.
What does the variable mean?
Because it's forty-k is certain hours of the day when children are coming and going.
Variable times.
Yes, it's, there's examples of it at Wacarrie and I think Dahuna. What other schools have?
We have at the moment, we've got what are called, there's a couple of things, we don't have variable forty-k speed limits in Dunedin at the moment. We do have what are called active warning signs that light up when the school is, you know, the beginning of the school day and the end of the school day. We do have some driver feedback signs which are at Wacarrie, which tell motorists what speed they're going and they tend to be put in places where there are a number of vehicles exceeding the speed limit. So one of the roads where there are high numbers of people exceeding the speed limit. With regard to the variable forty-k speed limit, I, what, and, you know, again, I'm standing in for Ron, but what I revisit we do, what we're basically asking is we've got, we are looking at schools, we're doing a lot of ongoing work with schools. This has been suggested as another tool, there's quite a rigorous process. And what we would do if we include any, and if we, and it's likely only to be a few, we would then put some understanding of what it's all about as part of the statement of proposal, so like an appendix. If that would, would that suit and satisfy?
What would suit is if we knew exactly what it was, how it's going to be signposted, how or if anybody has to go and change a sign at certain times of the day, and whether the police believe it's a good idea because they'll be the people that are enforcing it. I mean, this is a new kind of thing for Dunedin, as you said, we don't have any yet. For us to basically say go ahead and look into this when we don't even know what it is yet.
Sure.
It's just a step too far. I think we need more information for it.
councillor Stans?
I assume that this is similar to what I've seen in Christchurch, where there is an electronic speed sign. And normally it shows fifty-k, but during the school periods, it changes. And in their case, I think it goes down to thirty kilometres an hour and flashes. So it's telling you there's a different speed and then it returns. But I don't know whether that's, that's what's intended, but I have seen those in action in Christchurch. So I assume that is considered to be a variable speed limit because it changes the speed limit during the day from one speed to another.
Through the chair, you are, through the chair, just an explanation, you are correct, the variable speed limit signs, we have some guidelines out and I can give a summary of those. The speed limits and the variable speed limits, what they are is a speed limit that's set, it's identified to be reduced. So it's a fifty-k zone to be reduced to forty at the beginning and end of the school day. And that is, you know, if we go through the whole process of consultation and so forth and there is support for it, for a road, for example, then that gets included in the speed limits bylaw. It is enforceable by the police and there are specific ways of signing it, which are covered by legislation.
That's right, that's mayor.
I just had a chat to the general manager of transport. He suggests that putting this in when it's not in the report might not be the best of process, with all due respect, I know the thinking's happening at your end, but the report hasn't gone out, it's not, it's not in the public domain. That the best approach for this might be that if we just pull that middle one out at this point, and that the team do pull together a report that does outline the information, which is then in the public domain, and we bring that forward to the council meeting on the 23rd of September, which is only not that long away, and I think we can do that in time, just outlining what that is and what we're intending to add into the statement of proposal with your approval, but with the detail that you need, then it's in the public domain.
Are you, are you happy? I'm happy to do that, in which case I think we need to remove the reference to the appropriate standing committee. Because if it's going, it's coming, no, no, because the, the original talked about going to P and E. I think what is being suggested has come to the next council.
Yeah.
Is that right, that the report goes to the next council?
Firstly, the schools one will, I don't know whether the entire thing will be ready for the statement of proposal.
So in which case, we still need the second one?
No, so we'll bring a separate report to council on the issue of the schools, which may say, we're doing a report to P and E, here's something we'd like to add, and it contains the details around what they're going to be looking at at the schools, in which case, both of those then feed through into the next P and E report.
Okay, so we might be best just to remove reference to any specific agency or county and the first thing, just say reported back before being publicly notified.
Yep, that's fine.
Yep.
Is the mover and second happy with that? I just want to have your confirmation. More or less, yeah. Thank you, Theresa?
Okay, I understand that the ones that have decided the thirteen roads are more recreation-based. However, I'm a bit concerned that North Road, who wanted to have a speed reduction, has been excluded until it is part of the sort of wider assessment. Given that, I mean, that North Road was so important in the transportation strategy, the speed is quite a critical issue for that road. I worry about the timing if it's delayed and has to await till it becomes the neighbourhood way. Where does it sit on the list, North Road? Well, are we talking now a year away, two years, three years, four years until it's considered? So can I have some comment about when North Road speed limit would be looked at and prioritised with all the other region areas?
Is that a question that you can answer or does it have to be left for Ron to answer?
Well, I think it, it needs to go to a certain extent through Ron, but also one of the, the reason why this is a clean-up at the moment and then we're moving to area-based speed limits is we are still waiting for government to come up with. They're looking at the legislation for setting speed limits now. And if you remember the process that we went through with Middlemarch and the process we went through with the Otago, the rural peninsula, what's there in the peninsula is a demonstration. So it's not, we're not allowed to call it trial, but effectively that's what it is. So the information from that, and we're reviewing the vehicle speeds and, you know, how the speeds that vehicles go match in with the speed limit, any change in crashes, all that sort of thing. And there are other regions throughout New Zealand that are doing that at the moment. Now, the government wants to use, or NZTA wants to use that information to work out how these two, you know, moving forward, have, say, have a method for making safe and appropriate speed limits.
And I do appreciate that. My concern is that North Road, the problem is, you know, it was noted in the transportation strategy. And if we wait for the results of the peninsula, I mean, it could be years and years before North Road is, the northern end is considered. And yet, the transportation strategy give it a priority. So my concern is by leaving it off until then, is how many years will it take for that to happen?
Okay, two, through the chair, just two things. Firstly, I've lost the page. Item two, after adoption of the 1518 N L T P stuff, prepare a report on sites that may benefit from a change in speed limit. So that may included and be included in part of that. I guess it's partly Ron, it's partly what funding's available, all that sort of thing. But the intention there is to go on and carry out what are called area-wide reviews, centres, assessments. And if we go and look at North Road in isolation, not at the roads surrounding North Road, we could be rushing in and being accused of doing the same that's happened before and having a one speed limit on North Road, all the other roads off the side being a different speed limit, and that doesn't make sense. So we need to be very careful in what we do and also to take into account the risk of the various, where is one of the other drivers is, where is the biggest road safety risk? What's the most appropriate thing to do? How do we go about doing it? Where do the speed limits fit into that?
And I do appreciate that. I suppose, Madam Chair, with number two, I will need to wait until we go through that report into which sites are prioritised and which areas we start to do that neighbourhood based. And that's the north end, because of the transportation strategy, that to me is my greatest priority. But I'll leave it.
Equally, I think we're equal submissions on other areas in the transportation, like George Street and Port Chalmers, which may have equally the same effects, if not worse. So I'm not quite sure why you're only bringing in one area.
Well, it was in the transportation, fifty J was the top priority, just the north end through campus.
Through the centre, and centre planning, they've said they need to do that before they can assess in that strategy. Okay, any further discussion or debate? I'm going to put the motion as amended, all in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried, thank you. Thank you very much, Diane. And I'm sorry you had to go through that when it was Ron's report, it's always difficult. Huben and Ross, welcome back. Review of mobile trading bylaw 2004. You want to talk to this report, Ross?
Just briefly, thanks. Through the chair, mobile trading bylaws is up for review this year. And the changes are listed on the front, on the summary section there and covered, the reasons for those changes are covered in the report. The bylaw itself is actually working very well, we've got approximately 140 mobile traders in the city. And really this is just to tidy up a few areas within the bylaw.
Any questions, councillor Stevenson?
Okay, we have also, in parallel with this, we have the permanent food stalls policy 2006, which says that you can have one food stall in Ataga Museum or maybe more, one in Marlow Park, so many in the Octagon. And, you know, and it kind of almost overrides this, so that the fact that there are other food stalls, food premises in the Octagon, we still want to have some food stalls in some of our reserves. So I get by removing and revoking, that revoking that permission for food stalls to be located in certain reserves will mean that we won't be able to have food stalls in, say, the Ataga Museum Reserve because the Ataga Museum Cafe would be saying that we've got like products. So what we are doing is effectively not allowing mobile traders to go into places like Ataga Museum because we're revoking the other.
Through the chair, they, well, there's two options for those traders. One, they can actually apply to their local business operators and ask for written permission to be within 300 metres. They're also allowed to be in those areas whenever there's an event occurring because that's.
Yeah, I know, I'm aware that for an event, but I just see that it's part of the vibrancy is that we're actually also, it doesn't say it, but we're also going to revoke a permanent food stalls policy which allows food stalls to go on to our council reserves, which I think.
Only three council reserves, is it?
It's Marlow Park, the Octagon, Queens.
No, through the chair, the Octagon is not an area. The only one being used is the museum reserve, which I, how many, four or six?
But I'm not asking which ones are currently being used, but that are actually are available currently at Marlow Park, are they not?
Kettle Park.
Kettle Park, Marlow Park, museum reserve and Queens Gardens. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yes.
Oh, sorry, Wickliffe Square, sorry, through the chair.
Wickliffe Square, okay. And my concern is that what we're doing is also revoking that permanent food stalls, which will take them away from Wickliffe Square, Kettle Park, the museum reserve. And that is going to affect vibrancy of business in the area. And I think that we have, I think we, I've got no problem with mobile trading law, but I think that there are some council reserves where we should be encouraging business vibrancy. Sometimes these food stalls then go on to become permanent businesses and the council should be allowing them in certain reserves as well.
Through the chair, those sites have been available since this previous bylaw was reviewed. And currently, we don't, the only sites that have been, the only sites being used is at the museums, so we've had no interest in any of those other areas.
Queens Garden, it's used for an occasion, is it not?
That is not a permanent site. That operates, sorry, that mobile trader operates out of the 300 metre rule and is on.
Wickliffe Square does get used.
Wickliffe, sorry, which one is it? Wickliffe Square, that is actually on private property. The coffee machine there is plumbed into the building, it's in the footprint of the building.
But he's already restricted, wouldn't he?
So he's a mobile trader.
Could I just, clarity, the reason you're revoking the, before I come to the mayor, but the reason you're revoking the policy is the policy is not consistent at present with the bylaw, there are some inconsistencies in how they all don't work together. And the bylaw trumps that policy, is my understanding. I'm just wondering whether the recommendation for clarity in number one should mention that the permanent food stalls policy 2006 would be revoked in that? Because then we can, otherwise we're not being seen to be, people may want to submit on one, which is the point that Theresa's trying to make, and not the other. Albeit, in order to be a permanent food stall policy licence holder, you have to be a mobile trader.
Yes, through the chair, we're happy to have that.
Amendments, someone might work on that.
And sorry, I thought that for the purposes of consultation, there will be some information about the revoking of permanent food stalls policy and exactly which sites will be removed.
That, it doesn't actually mean that all sites will be removed, it just means that they'll be limited to two hours if the reserves.
Twelve hours.
Sorry, they'll be limited to two hours under the, oh, sorry, under the.
Through the chair, it's been increased to twelve hours.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
Three hundred metres as well.
Yeah, the three hundreds are always, yeah, three hundred has always been there, that's where the glitch has been, because we've been giving out licences which don't meet that 300 metre rule, is my understanding. Okay, mayor, sorry about that.
I'm just interested in, on page 8.3 mentions that in the event of a dispute, this is under restrictions, an authorised officer will have sole discretion to decide if the goods and services are like kind. And I'm interested to know what criteria the officer will use to decide. And I recall we had a conversation about this, about the danger that someone's selling popadons, but they're thought to be of a like kind to the pie shop. So what's the criteria for like kind?
Really, like for like, through the chair, sorry, like for like, so if you were selling coffee, it would be coffee, pies, it would be pies.
It's quite, it's quite specific.
Specific.
And it's not just. And it's not just, you can't sell food because this guy's selling food.
Yeah, we're not going to be looking at hot foods, so you can't sell hot food.
Thank you.
Type of food, yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, just had the suggestion for the amendment of the recommended one, which incorporates after, on the fourth line, after we'd identified, something along the lines of revocation of the permanent food stalls policy 2006. Sorry, councillor McTavish, I haven't got the wording, it's about to go on.
Well, just to, just to follow on from the mayor's issue, I agree that, I think that that will be an issue of significant interest to most submitters. And it seemed odd to me that like kind, there was such a focus on switching from similarity to like kind, or whatever the terminology was. And yet, it wasn't included in the definitions.
Okay.
In the interpretation, and it struck me as perhaps something that could be done to just improve the quality of consultation.
So under definitions and interpretations and the amendments and summary.
Yeah, through the chair, we're happy to have that, we can enlarge on that.
And it may assist in, not in the bylaw, but in the supporting information that there's some examples given. Do you, and I'm just wondering if it's easier, do you want to delegate that to staff to do, or do you want to delegate it to the chair or?
I'm happy, I mean, if it's considered an editorial change or something of that nature, then that's, I don't think it changes the intent of the bylaw as it's drafted, it's just getting a clarification. So I'd be hopeful to delegate to whoever.
Okay, thank you. The LPG storage, is that consistent with the new hazardous substances that we recently?
Yes, through the chair, we've consulted with the hazardous substance officer at the council, and we've also researched it, and it's all consistent.
Yeah, it's just a different wording, thank you. Are you happy to move that? I'm just wondering whether you need to, we need to do that delegation of the wording to either the chair or to staff or to a general manager for type laws and editorial changes? Who do you want that delegated to? Or does someone want to move the motion and tell me who they'd like that delegated to in that process?
It could be the chair of the consultation, the chief executive or director.
You're going to move that, mayor? Thank you. And that would be recommendations two and three as well? Yep, thank you. Did you get that amendment too? Thank you. The editorial changes? Any other questions or discussions? The mayor's moving it seconded. Anyone wish to second that? Thank you. McTavish, councillor McTavish. Theresa?
Can I skip to the motion?
Yes. Oh, no, sorry, can I just see if the mover wants to speak to his motion first? Thank you.
Okay. I am concerned about the revoking of the food stalls policy. I believe that this, the mobile trading policy should have some exemptions for some council reserves, so that even if they are in 300 metres, that they should be allowed to go into certain reserves. I believe that food stalls are a really good way to give a city vibrancy, and it's a good way for a new business to see how they could set up and to trial, and we have seen that work in Dunedin before. A good vibrant city should have a number of reserves that allow innovative businesses to give it a go, and that's where food stalls are. So I believe that there should be some exemptions of four different reserves in Dunedin, being Kettle Park, Marlow Park, the Gardens Reserve and the Museum Reserve. For one site should be allowed to go into that to let new businesses have a bit of a go, even with the 300 metre problem. These are council reserves and we do have the right to have a bit of vibrancy in our reserves. So because I feel like this bylaw is lacking that component of an exemption for reserves, I will be abstaining, and these will be the reasons why I'm abstaining.
Thank you. Any further debate? All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against?
Carried, and I abstain, and the reason's been that there are no reserves exemptions given.
Thank you. Moving on, thank you, to the next item, which is review of skateboarding bylaw 2005, same people. Ross, getting excited for us today. Councillor, sorry, do you want to speak to the report before councillor Collins?
I can just start off, through the chair, since it was last reviewed in 2005, there has been a significant increase in the number of skateboarders and corresponding has been issues with enforcement. We were looking at reviewing it and what probably pushed along even more was a submission from the police and retailers regarding the issues they had with skateboarders in certain areas and also the difficulties with enforcement. So that has really led to the idea or the proposal of the confiscation of skateboards and an extension, one new area where you can't skate, an extension to an existing area. So that's really where it's come from.
Advise what consultation you've done with in council and outside of council?
We've talked to transportation planning and it went on to transops, transportation operations. And also we have, also I had a meeting with, I'm starting to think of their names, it was a skateboard, bike and blade trust, we represented, came to an evening meeting and we ran through what the proposed changes to the bylaw were, and they didn't have any issues with what we were proposing.
Okay, councillor Collins.
Thank you. I think this is a step in the right direction, which is indeed overdue. And I think it's surely time to get serious about the profession of skateboarding in non-skeboarding designated areas of the CBD. And it seems at last there is at least a proposal here that has some muscle in it, and that is the confiscation of the skateboard.
What is your question, please? We're at question time. We're not talking to any recommendation yet. Sorry, councillor Collins.
And the, well, I've lost my train of thought, you can carry on.
No, I was just asking, it's question time.
It didn't say question time.
Well, it's normally a question, no one has put the motion as the issue, so we haven't got a motion to talk to. I said I'd get back to questions, sorry. Question? Ginty?
Well, just a couple of questions. I guess the first is, the problems with repeat offenders, can you articulate precisely what those problems are?
Through the chair, they're under 14-year-olds, they're asked to not to skate in a particular area and via, when we've employed armour guard to go and particularly during the school holidays, but they totally ignore it and can be even quite rude about what their answer is. So they're asked, and obviously moved to another area, another protected area, and again, they'll be asked to move on. It's the safety concerns also, the speed that they were, where they are skating, like the pecked area, Elbean Lane, where people, we've had, when the submissions from the retailers said that elderly people stepping out of their shop and nothing there, and then all of a sudden there's a skateboarder right there. So it's really the safety issues with the actual offenders, just knowing that if they're not older than 14, 14, that they can't be issued with an infringement notice and just really the normal compliance with the safety issues particularly.
Have there been a rise in incidents that have resulted in accidents?
Through the chair, I can't comment on the, any accidents. We, when the last school holidays, the armour guard, we asked him to record all the incidents he had during that fortnight period, and it was very clear in his report that often that the same group was just moving around the town on a daily basis, and he would ask them to move on, and they basically, was a quote, "You can't do anything to us." So this was younger people, and what we're really looking at here is not that we want to go out and collect every skateboard that we see, I would see this as a deterrent so that they know that something can be done. And if we look at, this same thing was done in Wellington, by Wellington council, and the information I got was only one, one real incident where they had to take some action over a quite a long period of time.
So, just so that I understand the problem definition, the problem is that there are a small group of under 14-year-old boys who may not necessarily be causing damage to property with their skateboards, but are skateboarding in areas that are under our current bylaw prohibited.
Yes, yes, it's the safety aspect is really where we're coming from here with pedestrians, and that's been clearly outlined in the submissions we got from the retailers, I see it and hear it from the people shopping and their customers about the danger, particularly, I'm using Elbean, Elbean Lane again as an example of that.
Did the retailers in their letters to you give specific examples of dangerous incidents where a shopper or elderly pedestrian had been hit by a skateboarder?
No, but they did give examples, and again, in Elbean Lane, where elderly customers had come close, very close to getting run down basically by a skateboarder, when they've stepped straight up of the shop and you're straight onto the footpath, if you can think of Elbean places, Elbean Lane, I should say, is an example of that. And there were, it wasn't just one or two retailers, there was a comprehensive list or separate letters, all quite different, but the same aspect, so it wasn't just one particular runoff and you run.
And are the letters from retailers, have they come specifically from people in Elbean Lane or from other parts of the city?
It was particularly Elbean Lane, because that was what the police saw a particular problem with that area, because it wasn't a prohibited area, and so that was really one of the main drivers.
Right, okay. Do you think that the, were the letters from retailers, do you think that the police had asked for them to be sent to you, i.e. were they solicited by the police to back up the request that they were making of council, or was that something that the retailers offered on the upper of the abolition?
Through the chair, the retailers were the drivers of this proposal, and it's not only Elbean Lane, I've also had complaints, several complaints from Lower Stewart Street, the winery shop down there, they were whizzing down past this winery shop and past the police station that it used to be, and there is some issues with safety there. So it has been driven particularly by the retailers from a safety perspective.
And in terms of the internal consultation that you guys have had, did your discussions with other departments include any other possible measures or ways of facilitating safe interactions between skateboarders and pedestrians and safe use of the central city for skateboarders, or did they simply concentrate on the bylaw and amendments to the bylaw?
Yes, the later, they had a copy of the skateboarding, what their proposed bylaw changes to it were, and it was, I understand that feedback was given on what was proposed.
Thank you.
Thank you councillor, sorry, the mayor, come.
I'm just interested, I know that the ban will be only on pavement, footpath, because it's legal to ride a skateboard on the road.
That's correct.
Is there an age limit to riding a skateboard on the road? Do you have to be 16?
I'm not aware there is an age limit. I believe that it's like a cycle, you know, like a bike.
So an eight-year-old could ride a skateboard down the road through heavy traffic, perfectly leadway?
That's my understanding, is they could ride a bicycle down the road.
Okay, thank you.
But through the chair, that someone on a bike would have a helmet on.
I'm aware of the other anomalies as well.
Councillor Stevenson?
I mean, this is a review of the bylaw. I am talking to the motion.
There isn't a motion, it's question time.
Well, I want to talk to the motion.
Well, that's why I'm waiting for, do you want to put the motion?
No, I don't.
Sorry, that's, sorry, yeah, this is question time at the moment, does?
I'm heading, I've got the motion, I would like to move in the event that you.
Well, you can move it now, I haven't got any other, no one else stood up for the motion, so it's fine.
Well, this is really to test the will of the meeting, because, well, I'll say what it is first, you know, speak to it. A two-part motion, the first part, that further internal consultation be undertaken on the proposed changes to the skateboarding bylaw in the context of the finalised transportation strategy. And secondly, that as part of these discussions, consideration also be given to issues pertaining to mobility scooters. And if I may speak to this.
Well, does anyone want to second that motion? Thank you councillor Stevenson, will you speak to that motion?
The reason for wanting, or asking staff to go back and have a broader look at this is simply because I think that the evidence base and the proposed approach is trying to deal with a problem which in some ways is fairly restricted to a small group of young people, and it is proposing a solution which basically affects all users of wheeled, all wheeled pedestrians. And I have a bit of a problem with that. I think that the problem definition isn't particularly good, and I think we need to take a good look at the evidence and we need to take a broad look at possible solutions. And part of the reason for that is that having sat in on the transportation strategy hearings over the past few days, there have been issues raised about wheeled pedestrians other than skateboarders, that we do, we do have an increasing number of skateboarders obviously in our city, but we equally, we have an increasing number of mobility scooter users, and I think some of the issues that we are facing with all of these wheeled pedestrians are similar and therefore we need to be considering a holistic approach to the way that we deal with and welcome wheeled pedestrians in our CBD, subject to of course, many of the safety concerns that we all have. So I guess, I see that the implementation or this transportation strategy document is setting a bit of a vision for how we cater for all of our, all of our transport modes and all of our different users. And I would like us to consider, before we go about, and this may well be the solution or a part of the solution, but I think that we need to have a broader look at that before we decide on something quite as specific as this intervention. So that's the background.
Can I just ask a question, if I may, relating, that I was going to ask first anyway, and it relates to, under the Local Government Act, are we allowed to, we're obviously empowered to do things about skateboards, are we empowered to do anything about mobility scooters or any other form of wheeled transport?
Under the Local Government Act, we are permitted to create a bylaw to protect public.
Okay.
Public safety, sorry.
Yep, so it relates to this public safety on footpaths, okay, thank you. Have we got a copy of the submission from the police and what they achieved or their concern?
Yes, we have, it's not not included in that.
No, but what was their, can you give me, find out what their submission was about?
It was the, through the chair, was the lack of ability to enforce when they're under 14-year-olds. The lack of deterrent, because the skateboarders realised that they couldn't be, nothing could happen to them. And in fact, even 14 and plus, if they didn't pay the $50 infringement, then there'd be lack of ability to do anything. So that's, it was really, my understanding is the police don't want to go out and start taking skateboards or young skateboarders, it's really that there is a deterrent, that they understand there is a deterrent, a real deterrent, and you would hope that no skateboards either have to be confiscated.
Okay, so we've got a motion on table and seconded, a debate, or questions?
I'd like to foreshadow an alternative motion, which is basically the recommendations as they sit one, two and three on page 9.2. In the event that this motion fails, I'd like to foreshadow the original start recommendations.
Thank you. Councillor Graham?
Yes, I have some difficulty with changes that have been made, and specifically introducing the mobility scooter, because I have a real problem, if you look at the demographics of Dunedin.
Because I have a real problem, if you look at the demographics of Dunedin, Dunedin's moving towards an aging population and there's going to be more and more mobility scooters. And I think you'll have a really hard job convincing the elderly people that they must, uh, submit to a skating bylaw to cover their mobility scooter. Because to me, that, they wouldn't re-register that whatsoever, you know, that... I think the mobility scooter is something that needs to be treated on its own. And I, I think it needs to be locked out in the wider context of your transportation strategy as that comes through. And I think that's something that, that needs special treatment because it's a special part of our community, you've got a real interest in that going forward. And to me, to incorporate it in a skating bylaw, most, most of the elderly just won't even consider that. It won't be something that will cross their mind. So I'm really concerned that that would dovetail into this bylaw.
I'm not quite sure that that was intended, it was about saying, should there be a bigger policy that dealt with them consistently, but I may have that wrong.
Well, I may just clarify that the intention was not to, um, include mobility scooters in this bylaw, but to include discussion of mobility scooter issues, um, as part of a broader conversation about wheeled pedestrians in general, um, i- in the context of this new, um, transportation strategy. And the reason for that is simply because I think that if we're treating skateboarders, um, if we rush, well, as I consider, um, moving this through now just before we sign off on the transportation strategy, it kind of misses that broader opportunity to have a discussion about all of those different wheeled pedestrians and, and talk about, because there may be synergies between the way that we can, um, deliver for, um, mobility scooters and the way that we can deliver for, um, other wheeled pedestrians.
I'm still not convinced. My, my view quite clearly is that it's been signaled to us by the police that we're in a problem, we can't deal with it at the moment with the bylaw that we've got. I think, why wait? Why not deal with this issue? It's a specific issue of skateboarding. You can deal with it on its own, and then you can deal with the wider issue of other wheel vehicles on footpaths and another consultation process.
Thank you. Um, councillor Stevenson?
Um, for a start, I'd like to have them taken as two parts, because as I understood what Ginty was suggesting, was that the first one was just to do some wider consultation, to look at the data, to look at the issues, which I think is absolutely important before, because what I'm looking at here is like a paragraph saying that there's been police problems. I want to see what problems, how much, you know? Who does it involve? What spaces does it involve? Does it involve self-dunedin or not, you know? So, I, I, that's the first one, is just look, getting more data, more information, more consultation first. The second one was to look at mobility issues. And I believe, and, and that wasn't as part of this bylaw, but just to look at that as well. So can we have them taken separately? And, in speaking in support of one and of two, I would very much say that I am not going to go ahead and make changes or propose changes to a bylaw based on one paragraph of problems. I need to see what the problems are and see them properly. And I'm also very concerned that there is going to be a consequence to this draft bylaw change of putting children on skateboards that want to hang out on the main street, as young people do. You're going to put them on the road, because that's what they'll be forced into. And I just think that, that we are not considering the consequences of our decision, which could be actually quite life-threatening to children. And I think that that is just really foolish decision-making. So I think we should very much go for that as suggested one and two.
Councillor Collins, then councillor Staines?
Decided councillor Stevenson and McTavish have completely lost track of what this is about. Councils before this one have had this problem brought to them to solve. We made up some bylaws and said there was a designated no skateboarding area in response to that. And it included, in more recent times when they reviewed this part of the Espernat at St. Clair, where we had just spent seven million dollars and then the bricks and the paving were being broken and knocked about by skateboarding. They do cause breakages in town. You can go down any time you like and see what's going on in the off Biggins or any other part of town, because they are dangerous. And pedestrians and skateboarding don't mix, they do not mix. And I gather, there's a tone gathering here that if we could allow people of all ages, not just under fourteen, but there are people of older ages on these skateboards. This plant, we've built, we've spent thousands and thousands of dollars building skateboard parks. That's what they're for. They're not for skating up and down the main street and causing problems. Problems with retailers, problems with elderly citizens, problems with citizens generally. And if you get a skateboard wrapped around your ankle, you'll know about it. We've been asked by the police and the retailers to do something about it, to, to do something about it with a bylaw with, with some muscle, that they can actually take some action here and there. Dunedin is a soft touch for skateboarding, because we do very little. We don't do anything in fact. We allow it to keep happening. And there again, staff have been asked to come up with a suggestion that we help solve it, they bring it to us, and we spend any amount of time finding out. It's saying we should consult, all the consult, consultation has been taken for years. And people keep coming to us saying, sort it. We don't sort it. We build skateboard parks, we allow skateboarding. So, that's what we're here for.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Staines?
While I can understand where councillor McTavish is coming from in terms of looking at skateboarding as a means of transport across our city, I think we're missing the point here. And I tend to agree with councillor Collins. These, the bylaw was brought in to protect pedestrians in a high-density pedestrian area. That's what it was brought. And I accept that there may be issues, although it doesn't appear to be so common in Dunedin as it is in Moskew with mobility scooters. And that may, may certainly be another piece of work that needs to be done. But it seems to me, we have a situation here where there are high-density pedestrians. They're at risk from skateboarders, particularly skateboarders who show no respect for the bylaw or for the law. Um, I see no reason why, for these very limited areas, we shouldn't make the change to the bylaw. In terms of the overall city and how skateboarding may be considered as a form of active transport, I'm quite happy for that to be a different discussion. Um, but I, I see no reason not to proceed with the way the resolutions were originally put, and I won't be voting in favour.
Mea culpa?
Well, I see this as an issue of hazards on the footpath. And we've got more of various types of hazards. And I personally am a damn sight more afraid of mobility scooters than I am of skateboards when I'm hit by one. But the context is, we are, and we are proposing a solution here to one group of children. Um, and children have been, I can recall in my youth, being ripped, not, you know, pulled up by the local policeman for riding a bike on the footpath. And I was reprimanded for it, and I, there was a penalty or whatever, and I was stopped. So, given that there are likely to be more skateboards and more mobility scooters, the issue is not about whether they're on the pavement, the issue is how they're being used. So, I do think that some merit in having another look and seeing, and the, the end result might be that we come up with a bylaw which says, yes, if you use a skateboard dangerously on a high-volume pedestrian area, we will take it off you. But it isn't because you're riding a skateboard, it's because you're doing something stupid and dangerous and you shouldn't be doing it. So I think that there is some merit in having a look at how we might do this, because councillor Brown's right, the aging population means that, um, we will confront, um, a lot more of different kinds of, and, um, you know, councillor Van Biss is electric, bicycles, um, will spawn all sorts of, um, weird wonderful things on the footpaths too, so we could have anything. So I think we should be, we should be focusing on the behaviour and, and be conscious of the fact that it's a small group we're dealing with, and see if there is a way of dealing with this so that children, and I'm talking about eight and nine and ten-year-olds, actually can use a scooter or a skateboard on the road, on, on the pavement safely, because that's how kids get around. So, I will support this, because I think there's a little, little more innovative thinking that could be done.
Any other, I'm going to speak before you, any one of Andrew or Paul, I don't think you've spoken?
Um, I'm actually going to support this, um, because of the debate and because of what I've learnt in the time of being on the transportation strategy and the holistic approach that we need to take. Um, I would want not to be seen as a city that is, um, looking only at one aspect. And I know that the Moskew-Tara Community Board have asked for some time for a review of transportation matters as it relates to mobility scooters. I don't think they need to be linked, but I would hate to be seen as being aged. And I think we should, should be considering all of these together and we will get a much better result. Um, the issues of design of our city amenities and why we, um, design cities that are, or bricks and blocks that are liable to break, I'm not quite sure. And I know that we're doing a new, um, brick work in certain amenity areas. And I'd hope that we were getting bricks that were unlikely to be damaged from natural and, and sometimes vibrant use of the community, um, infrastructure. I've seen some of the wonderful skateboarders' films made in Pricechurch after it was, um, destroyed by earthquakes. And some really innovative and fun and, um, vibrancy that they, those young, generally men brought to the community out there. I also, um, am really concerned that we are confusing issues of transportation, um, rather than skateboard parks. They're quite different affairs. In fact, we put skateboard parks in places which are outside of residential communities. Then they have to get there somehow. And God forbid, we're going to encourage them only to be driven by their parents, and that they can't get there by walking, um, or skateboarding. It's natural that they will want to use a skateboard. Um, I think scooters are possibly no different, and I would hope that that would be part of this. If people are going to misuse their transportation means, as people do on the road as well, that, um, they will have a measure of, of control and enforcement, but we have to look at it holistically. And I don't think this document does. And I think we should be, without looking for solutions, looking for a much wider transportation and control mechanism rather than just, um, this. So, I'm going to support this in the first instance, to get that open debate. And partly because I want to see the transportation strategy get through and see what comes out of that as a holistic approach, rather than picking on one prior to, one area of the community prior to that consultation being completed. Councillor Noon?
Thank you, madam chair, I wasn't going to speak, but the emphasis, we put on the transportation strategy, I felt obliged to, to partake. Um, I'm part of that, that hearings panel. And I don't believe that, uh, to resolve this matter, which is about effectively, um, implementing a policy, the skateboard bylaw, um, and it's, it's about making sure that we have the tools to be able to implement it effectively and taking notice of what the police have told us. So, looking at the big picture, as you say, madam chair, I'm, I'm just a little nervous if that is our approach, uh, to de- to deal with what I would say is relatively mundane type issues that we're confronted with on a fairly regular basis. Um, you know, if we continue to look at the holistic approach, I don't think we'll ever, um, you know, achieve having, you know, effective policies that the staff can then go away and implement, uh, because we'll be forever reviewing and looking at, you know, the big picture. So, my view is, I think, just deal with this as, as it is, as it's been presented, rather than just looking at the big picture.
Thank you. Oh, now we've got councillor Hudson has decided to speak. Thank you.
I think you may remember that three months ago, I asked for more information from Ron about skateboard and non-skating areas, because over time, they've totally worn off. And in many cases, he's identified that they are not identified. And I understand there is a proposal already before staff that they are going to be remarked and the signs put back in places that are supposed to be there. I think it may be happened.
Through, through the chair, there's an extra thing, five signs being, um...
Yeah, and that, this motion doesn't get rid of that? This that motion, no?
No, my understanding would be, whatever happens, that that still goes ahead. And yes, those current areas are clearly identified, because I don't think it would be fair for people to skateboard, because most of them don't know the areas that they're not allowed to skateboard.
No, I appreciate that, and that we, we did follow through on that. So, um, that happens regardless. The bylaw doesn't lapse from this motion, it just allows for a different conversation, is my understanding.
Okay. Trying to reply, yes?
I, I think that, starting from the end of the conversation, I, I take councillor Noon's perspective that there is a need to, there will always be a need for policies to enact, for a bigger scale policy. And I appreciate that this is, um, this is a response and, um, to, to an identified problem. Albeit that I think that possibly it is a response that would benefit from reconsideration in the context of the bigger picture, um, that we have been discussing as part of the transport strategy. So, we, we're seeking to have an integrated transport strategy, we're seeking to have a, a strategy, um, that, 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 um, deals with all of our modes together, rather than splitting them up into little pieces. And I, I think that that's where I'm seeing the missing in this document that's in front of us today. I, I don't consider that this, um, is, is, has been considered in that greater context. Councillor Collins says we need to do something about it and that we're a soft touch for skateboarding in Dunedin. Well, I'm not proposing that we don't do anything about the identified problem. That's not at all what I'm proposing. What I'm, what I'm suggesting is that we need to have another thing about the response that we take and about what we do do. Because I think that, um, you know, we can take punitive and prohibitive, prohibitative approaches, which, um, can result in members of our community feeling ostracised from places where they should feel at home. Or we can look at alternative mechanisms that might provide infrastructure or, um, spaces that, um, deliver for, uh, the changing needs of transportation users in Dunedin. And that is why I've included the referenced mobility scooters. Um, because I would like to see all of these new emerging transportation modes to be equally welcome and equally provided for, um, and equally accessible when, when, um, or have an equal amount of access to our CBD. I don't consider that it is a soft touch to, um, to prohibit a legitimate form of transportation from our central business district. Um, I don't consider it a soft touch to treat young men, um, who are on skateboards as vehicles and require them to cycle in the carriageway with fast-moving, um, motorized vehicles. Um, and I think that it is time that we recognise as a city that just as mobility scooters are an essential transport mode for older people, um, for younger people, uh, wheeled transport is an essential and, um, and totally legitimate way of moving between places. I think the problem that we have is that our infrastructure is not serving these people. It's not the people themselves, it's not, um, it's not a matter of conflict between users that anyone, that's anyone's fault. It's simply the fact that our infrastructure and our current thinking is failing us. And that's why I think we need to have a better, more holistic think about ways that we can get win-win-wins for all modes of transport.
I'm now going to put the, the motion, you've spoken. She, she had the right of reply? Sorry, I'm going to put, put the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Against?
No.
Show of hands, please. Aye, four. One, two, three, four, against. Lost. I'll now go to the motion of Lee, be foreshadowed.
I'll see three recommendations on the paper.
Yep, and secreted by councillor Staines. Any discussion? Thank you.
Um, okay, for the map on page nine point eight, showing the prohibited areas in the central city, that shows the carriageway has been included, and I don't think that map is correct. The bylaw covers footpaths only, not the road, so...
That, could you just talk to that? So that's meant to be just the footpaths, not the carriageways?
Yes, uh, through the chair, that's, that's identified, the footpaths in those areas. So it should be on two sides?
So it should be on two sides, two sides as opposed to a solid line?
Yeah, so can that, please, that map be amended to be truer?
No, I don't think this map is a problem. I think what you need to have is prohibited areas in the central city being the Carriageways as, sorry, the footpaths and the marked areas.
Yeah, okay, so yeah, so it's the footpaths. Because you would read that, you would think the whole entire area is a part of the band and not... And then finally speaking to this, I have a problem that we are putting this up for consultation based on one paragraph of information about complaints, one paragraph. I have not got any data. I do not know what the consequences of being more heavy handed on children will be. I am certain that one of the consequences of being more heavy handed on children and confiscating their boards will be that they feel ostracised, that they don't feel at home in their very city, which I think is a devastating thing for Dunedin City to do. And I think that some of them will want to, will end up skateboarding on the road. And when we're talking about little children, I've got a real problem with that. So due to the lack of information of doing this consultation, we do not have sufficient information yet to make a decision if we should even be going out with this particular proposal. And for that reason, I would not be supporting it.
Okay, sorry, apologies, I've got two councillors wanting to speak, but I didn't actually give you a chance to speak to your motion first. You had sort of already, but I just wanted to check, you're okay with that?
No, no need.
Thank you. Councillor Hudson?
Just a question, quiet Harrop Street and Municipal Lane are not included on the map.
I don't think Municipal Lane has a...
It hasn't been identified as a problem and doesn't have a footpath. What is it?
Well, it is a whole footpath, it's not a vehicleway, the whole thing is a whole footpath. Can you have a look at that, please? And also Harrop Street, because Harrop Street certainly has an issue.
Well, we just... It hasn't been, they haven't had any issues there. You, yeah, I appreciate where you're coming from. There have been issues in... Well, they haven't filed previous complaints obviously because the staff are unaware of it.
It's only because Harrop Street's only this degree of...
Well, it has been in the last five years, it has been open in that time. I presume, sorry, the question... Yeah, but the data that you've received prior to that, you've seemingly forgotten, are not aware of any issues in that area? Okay.
Or Municipal, aye. Sorry, or Municipal, aye.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Collins?
Thank you, I just want to make a point. A lot of this conversation on this topic is steering towards children on skateboards. If councillors read the report that's before us, it's not just about children, it's about skateboarding, skateboarding in the CBD areas that are designated for no skateboards or non skateboarding. And the discussion which keeps coming up about consultation, going back to consult, I would again direct councillors to the bottom of nine point three, under consultation, where members of the Skateboard Bike and Blade Trust were consulted about these proposed changes and their needs and concerns. And the group were supportive of these proposed changes. So consultation has been done, that's what staff have been doing prior to bringing this report to council. And I just say it hives us to read these reports, see what consultation has been taking place, recognise there is a problem again and do something about it. That's why we have elections.
Thank you, councillor, or Mayor Cal?
Yes, I'm not going to vote for this. As I indicated in the previous one, I think it's far too broad. It's basically applying a solution that is really only about one small group of adolescents to everyone. So I could bring my eight year old granddaughter to Albion Lane and someone could require her inline skates from her, but that'd be a hard job. But that, this is too broad, it's vague, and it would lead to inconsistency when one kid gets a skateboard taken off and another kid's riding online skates and he doesn't or she doesn't. So I might be supporting it, it's sloppy.
Councillor Brown?
Well, I think we need to look at recommendations. And the recommendations are we're going after consultation and we're going to have a hearing process. So the community is going to have the opportunity to make comment and give their thoughts on the process. If you read the discussion quite clearly, it's about dealing with a limited few. It's the few people that break the law, the same as when you're driving a motorcar. The majority of people follow the law, you've got people that choose not to follow the law. They get penalised and there's penalties there which are deterrents. What the police are saying to us is at the moment, there's no deterrent for those few that spoil it for the majority. And here we're giving them a toolbox which will be able to deal to those people if the community so wishes in the hearing processes, that they will then have something in their toolbox that they can deal to those minority who choose to disregard the safety of others. And it's quite clear that the police aren't going to rock up to someone that's skateboarding in an area and say, oh, I want your skateboard. What they're saying is after repeated requests... And so therefore they're actually going to give the community or the skateboarders the opportunity. I also want to make sure there's a balance in the debate because repeatedly councillor McTavish has said about young men riding skateboards. I happen to have seen young women riding skateboards too, so I think we need to have a balance. It's skateboarders in general, not agenda.
Thank you. It's councillor McTavish?
Yeah, well, thank you. Sorry, I apologise if I have said anything which has resulted in gender imbalance being represented. My understanding on the basis of what staff have said is that the issues that have been identified which have prompted these changes were a small group of adolescent men. So I stand to be corrected on that front, but that was the context for my...
Through the chair, there was no gender mentioned at all? Skateboards, that was it?
In which case I apologise for that. The, but I won't be supporting this. And the reason for that is twofold. The first is that I think that we need to be clear, whenever we go out for consultation, that what we're proposing as a council is the best solution that we can come up with. I don't think we should ever go out to consultation not thinking that we've got it as right as we possibly can before we seek the public's feedback. I think that that's tantamount to wasting the public's time and I don't think it's disrespectful. What I consider that we have in front of us is a paper which recommends some changes to an existing bylaw and in that manner effectively endorses the rest of that bylaw because there are no other proposals being changed to it. I think that what we currently have in front of us in this bylaw is discriminatory. And I think that it is not the most effective or productive way that we can provide for a mode of transport in a safe manner and in a manner which facilitates interaction between modes of transport in a safe way. So whilst I don't pretend to have the answers and I certainly would be, I would be keen to hear different perspectives brought to the table on this issue. I think that this, what we have in front of us currently is not the answer. And for that reason, I can't support it. So that's all, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just wondering whether maybe some people who can't put a submission in by the eleventh, but by the fourteenth of October may be able to for the sake of maybe not being, maybe being on council. Because there may be some, people standing for council would like to put a submission in who may feel conflicted until after the twelfth of October. I'm just going to suggest whether it hurts to change the date by one week to provide for that. And I'm not talking about people around the table who are still here now, I'm talking about other, elected? I know. No, the fourteenth, if it was allowed to be the fourteenth, people who aren't elected on the twelfth could put a submission in, is one. Would there be any problem with the mover changing that date to the eighteenth? Just process wise?
Sorry.
Do you have a problem with that date being changed? Would you want it to say?
In two, you mean?
Yes, to the eighteenth. It's just that because of maybe people who are standing for council...
No, no problem at all.
Okay, I just think it's a fairer process. I, that's great, that's noted. Sorry, who seconded that? Neil Collins? I thought we had him.
It was either Staines or Brown that seconded it, I think.
Staines, sorry, Staines, apologies. Are you happy with that, Chris, to change the date to the eighteenth?
Sir.
Oh, sir, sorry.
It was actually, sir.
So are you happy, are you happy to acknowledge the seconded that, sir? Thank you. So change the date to the eighteenth? Okay. Any further, do you want to write a reply?
Yeah, just briefly.
That's fine.
I think that what staff have given us here is basically their best shot. And what they want to do is they want the bylaw to be made available for public consultation. I think that given that we've introduced this bylaw in the first place and that currently it's completely unworkable and that this is the staff's best shot at, in consultation with the police and actually making something workable, I think we should give them that opportunity. It is for a special consultation procedure. The process, I believe, is rigorous. It obviously has staff and the police support. I think we need to support them, getting them to do a job where they simply are in a lose-lose position and they are being abused by non-compliers. It's not something that I would want to continue to put them in as a position. So I urge you to vote for recommendations one, two and three on that basis.
Okay, I'll put the motion to all in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against?
No.
Show of hands, ayes, please. One, two, three, four, five, six, thank you. Against?
Three.
Okay. Passed, thank you.
Number seven, last matter is notification about agenda items for consideration by the Chair. I'll just note that work on the CATS has progressed, we had a good meeting. I will put those papers available to the next council on that. There has been some work done on that. Any other matters of notification for the Chair?
No, I'd just like to take this opportunity, thank you Kate for what you've done with Charing Plan and Environment. And there's always things at the end of three years that haven't been completed, but most of the planning environment things are in good stead, including the district plan and the spatial plan, which is a huge amount of work. And there's just the commercial use of footpaths which is dragging on, but no doubt that will be done with you.
There's a new review happening, using, going place by place and looking at communities. I'd just like to take this opportunity of thanking you all for your participation and involvement and especially to Tony and Sue putting up with me as Chair and having eight thirty briefings at times or eight o'clock even worse in order to fit into my timeframe. So thank you very, very much and thank you for your support. Wish you all the best.